Yes.
Good evening and welcome to the Town of Stowe Select Board Meeting for May 28, 2024. Our first order of business is reorganization of the board. This is a moment where we will choose a chair and a clerk. Chair's job is to set the agenda with the town administrator and then to run meetings. And clerk's job is to support the chair or to do the chair's job when the chair is not present or available. So with that, I will take nominations or indications of interest.
I was hoping we could have a conversation first and find out before anybody nominates anybody. Because I hate that nominate one person, that's do or die.
Okay.
But find out who is interested and if there's someone that we should all consider nominating first.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'll start. I'm not interested.
I'll second, I'm not interested.
You're not interested?
I am interested.
Okay.
I'm interested.
So we've got two.
What about you?
And you?
No, no. No, I'm good. I can wait a little while.
So would you, with Megan and JT, do you have a few words to say?
Do you want me to start?
Sure.
So I, as you all know, because we were on the board together, chaired the board a couple of years ago. And I think I enjoy, I enjoyed chairing because I like, I don't know, I liked being able to run the meetings. This is like a terrible, right? Thanks Courtney, put me on the spot. Let me tell you why I should be chair. So I just, I enjoyed it. I felt like as a mom of two teenagers, I am very concise. I like things to run a certain way. And I think that, you know, I understand that the role of the chair is really just to run the meeting and to make sure that the agenda is set. And so I think, you know, I think I did a good job a couple of years ago and I would be willing to do it again. And that's it.
Great, thank you. JT?
I'm interested in taking over the chair. I've had extensive experience sharing a number of different committees and working groups. And I really feel that I've got a fair amount of experience. I feel that in that position, it is really extremely important to act more as a facilitator and to be support for the rest of the members to move issues forward and to keep things moving along in an orderly fashion. And I also have enjoyed the times I've been a chair of the different committees as well and the accomplishments that are achieved through team effort.
Okay. Now do I hear any nominations?
I would say that I agree with Megan. She did an excellent job as chair last year. Well, it was the year before. But I'm also one that would like to give everybody a chance. I'm not nominating, but if we were to nominate, I think I'd want to see JT.
So I have noticed over the last year, well, first of all, I agree, Megan, you were a phenomenal chair. You had some very challenging meetings that you had to run and I thought you ran them gracefully and with skill. And JT, I noticed over the last year when we worked together, you've always been prepared. You have been, you have said what you've, you've contributed to conversations and meetings. So I think we have two really good candidates. And I'm somewhat aligned with Hector in that I think if, Megan, how much longer is your term?
Um, two more years.
Okay, and you are three, three more years. So I'm also in agreement that it would be a good opportunity. You do have experience on other boards. This is an important board to the town. And there's a lot of give and take that's required. And you've said nicely that you understand the facilitation role and the working together and the team role, which I appreciate. And you also have that skill, Megan. I guess I'm willing or interested in perhaps supporting your role. It's for a year. I think you could learn a lot. I think one of the things that this board has worked very productively on is we respect one another. We talk things out. There's no negativity that gets thrown across the table. And I anticipate both of you would continue that role and that you would both continue to maintain that culture in this board. So it's a difficult choice and I'll be quiet and see if the chair has anything she wants to say.
Well, I like everything that's been said so far and I agree. I also feel it's a moment when we, both Ingeborg and I will be up for reelection next year. And so this year is an opportunity, while we've all been together for a couple of years, to, to, to support someone who hasn't chaired this board before. We know that Megan can do a fine job and instead of rewarding her for that, we're going to...
Thanks guys.
I said, well, yeah. So my thought would be to nominate JT as chair. And I will make that nomination since...
I'll second that.
Others are working that way. All right, any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. So Mr. Tool, would you like to continue? Would you like to run the meeting from here out?
I think I would like to defer until we get the position of the clerk taken care of at least.
Okay. I'm going to nominate Ingeborg.
The woman who says no to everything?
No.
I will accept the role of clerk if so nominated.
I'll second the nomination.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
And any abstentions?
I'm abstaining, yes please.
Mr. Tool?
Can I ask a procedural question? Sorry, who's going to second now that the chair is now the chair? You was going to do the second.
I'll make the second.
Okay, thank you.
Oh yeah.
I knew we could work that out.
And for this evening, since everybody's electronic gadgets are set up, I think we'll just stay in the seats we're in, if that's all right with everyone.
Oh yeah.
Okay, the proof's in the pudding.
Yes, it is. Can I have my right-hand person on my left-hand side to assist as we need to? The next thing on the agenda we have is our public comment. We allow two minutes for that and that is for anything that is not presently on the agenda. So is there anyone, whether it's mobile or here presently, that has anything to say?
I actually, I have something just real quick. Couple of meetings ago, this board was gracious enough to approve a policy on the license plate reader cameras. They have not been installed. It's going to still be another couple of months. However, we were able to utilize that technology through our mutual aid agreements with another town where we had two CDOs trail stolen from down the lake area. We were able to use that technology, find out who stole the property. And we're able to do, working with, it was like five other towns, recover trucks, CDOs, trailers, dump trucks. So we were able to really, because the homeowner in Stowe had a camera system on their house, we saw the individuals who were responsible for it and the vehicle that they used. And then within 15 minutes, we were able to get a lead on it and we were able to bring that to a closure. So I just want to let you know that that technology worked for us and we didn't even have it yet, so. So those are my two thoughts.
You stole my thunder under board. That's exactly what I was going to bring up tonight.
No, I'm sorry. I didn't know, I didn't know.
Thank you.
No, that was a very appropriate comment. And we're really glad to hear it.
Is there anyone else who assists to speak on any topic, not on the agenda? All right, seeing and hearing none, board member comments?
I would like to just...
Hard habit to break.
Just going to thank Chair Fresha for her leadership over the last year. I think, I know that it is not an easy job and so.
Guys, speak up a little bit. You guys are all a little soft this yearly.
Yes.
I'm never the problem. Courtney, thank you for your leadership this past year. I know that being the chair is not an easy job and congratulations, Mr. Tool. Best of luck to you.
Thank you, Megan.
You're welcome.
I'll second that.
I will too.
Are there any other comments from the board?
I'll just say very quickly that I thought our Memorial Day parade was a trip. It was so fun. I really enjoyed it, so I just want to thank everyone who participated in organizing that.
Yes, I agree.
Including the cows.
Yes.
Whoever they belong to.
Yeah.
Actually, yes, and the young lady, the eighth grader who read...
Oh my gosh, the Getty Girl.
That is probably one of the most moving, that was probably one of the most moving readings I have heard in a very long time. She really, I felt captured the essence of what it was and what it was all about.
Yes.
Completely agree.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll move on to the town administrator's report.
Just two quick matters for you this evening. I'd like to thank everyone who came out last week to the Stow Acres Draft Master Plan presentation. For those who are unable to make it but still want to weigh in on the draft plan, the information, including a link to the full presentation, is available on our website and we will be accepting feedback until May 31st. So right into news and notices, you can click on it, brings you to the page with all of the presentations, the handouts, and it's about an hour-long presentation. And we are expecting to execute the contract for the library this week. So the next step, once that is signed, will be for the GC to come out and install temporary fencing. The fencing will run from Crescent Street across Common Road to the commons. So at that time, we will be shutting down Common Road. The chief is putting out notification, we'll be starting this evening notifying residents that it's coming. But folks should be aware that that road will be blocked in the near future. Folks will still have access. And then the gate will, the fence will have a gate on both sides of Common Road just in case there are, there is a need to get vehicles through, mainly when we're doing the demolition of the building. They'll want to just drive through with the trucks. So keep an eye out that that is formally moving forward. That is it tonight.
Thank you. Okay, the next thing on the agenda are the appointments. The first being Brian McCarthy to the position of patrol officer through June 30th, 2025. Chief?
So we can go through some transition. Over the past year, I've been in front of this board a few times with new employees. Tonight would be the third of new employees that I hope to bring forward and that will top off our, bring us back to full staff. Brian went through the same process that you saw Jason go through and Olivia go through. He was on our list, on top of our list as well. He brings forward a lot of experience, life experience. He was an active-duty Marine and he's now in the National Guard. He is very quiet. And I can tell you though, by talking to some of the interviewers, at least one of the civilian interviewers, she made a comment that he's definitely good for Stowe. And that's a, that's a big, big thing for someone to say who is a resident of town. I think he's proven himself. I know that he was going to finish his degree, but he's going to put it on hold so he can go to the police academy for us and then he'll finish his last four classes once he graduates the police academy in December. The plan is for him to start, if appointed tonight, which I really hope he does, is appointed, but the plan is for him to start the academy in July and be done by December, mid-December. And so he'll be, then start field training after that and that's usually typically about eight weeks long after that. So I really recommend that Brian be appointed as a patrol officer. Here he is now, if you have any questions there.
Well, Brian, is there anything you would like to say at this point?
Oh, I'd say that I'm very excited even for this opportunity and I appreciate investing your time and energy into me. I definitely love, love what I've seen from Stowe so far. I love the community engagement with law enforcement and really excited to see how things go.
Does any of the board members have anything that they'd like to say or any questions?
Thank you for your interest.
Thank you.
It sounds, it sounds like we're lucky that you're interested, we're interested in us.
Thanks so much.
And thank you for your service, too.
Yes.
Thank you.
No further comments. I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Brian McCarthy to the position of patrol officer for the Town of Stowe Police Department pending final approval by the town administrator and the satisfactory completion of all prerequisite physical and mental exams and a background check through June 30th, 2025.
Second?
Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Do well in the county.
Yes.
It's okay, you can stand up. I have to stay for some more stuff.
Right.
You don't have to sit through the whole meeting. There's a lot.
Yes, yes. Congratulations.
Thanks so much.
No problem.
And thanks for bringing everybody on.
Your family.
All right, and the next appointment is Laura Moore to the Cultural Council, June 30th, 2027. Laura, dear.
Yes, she's on the line.
I am, yes.
Great, welcome.
She's in San Francisco.
Thank you. I know.
The Golden Gate Bridge.
Very appropriate, I know.
Is there anything, Laura, you would like to say to the board at all?
I would just like to say that I hope with potential for the appointment to be able to really connect and make a good, a good effort on behalf of the community members here in Stowe. I'm relatively new to town, so I'm hoping to get engaged and helping out.
Well, thank you very much. Good way to start.
Yeah, she has a lot of good ideas. I love that. I think that, yes, we need that. That's good.
I've met a lot of really great people so far, so I'm very excited.
Thank you very much for your interest.
I think it's great that you're interested in becoming involved so quickly on your arrival in town. Thank you.
I'm not from next door, so it wasn't too far away.
Any other comments from the board? I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Laura Moore to the Stowe Cultural Council for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to, I'd like to just say one thing. I'm part of a group of artists that is perhaps interested in having a show in the community center, so I'm glad that the cultural council is, I think, filled up now.
There's still some vacancies, but they have enough members to offer grants.
So perhaps you can also consider displays in the community center as well.
I think that sounds great and I will work with the committee to do what we can.
Well, thank you. Moving along, for EDIC, I see we have two appointees, Andrew Crosby and Ginny Powell. Andrew's appointment would be through June 30th, 2028 and Ginny Powell's through June 30th, 2027. So we can start with Andrew.
Hello.
Hi, Andrew.
How are you?
Terrific. How are you tonight?
Good.
Is there anything you'd like to say to the board?
Sure. I mean, as some of you know, I've been involved in a wide range of businesses of my, almost my entire adult life. It's small business and large business and I enjoy it. I've enjoyed all my experiences working at, you know, at the level and as, currently as an owner and the president of my own company. And in Stowe, we obviously have difficulty in attracting business, but I think that's something we can overcome because I do believe that Stowe actually has a lot going for it. And it's really more, I think, understanding the business needs and how best to find businesses that will succeed here and help Stowe move forward and create a strong business community. And I'd love to be part of that.
Thank you. I think I'll entertain any thoughts that Ginny Powell may have as well at this time?
Hi, yes, happy to be here. Yeah, I'm also very excited. So I have lived in town for almost 10 years now and I, you know, always hear about the types of businesses that people want, the problems people think that we have from attracting business. And so, you know, finally got to a point where I said, you know, I want to, I want to be involved in the solution. So I'm really excited. I know that EDIC hasn't met in some time and I actually think it's a nice way to start fresh and hopefully get some new perspectives. I know we need a few more members before we can actually meet. But really excited to get moving and like Andrew said, hopefully start to show some local businesses, you know, that Stowe is a really great place to own and run a business.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussions from the board?
I'm pleased to see Andy's name on this. I've had the pleasure of working with him for the past year at the Green Advisory Committee and I found him to be very astute and have a great insight into so many things. So I'm looking forward to what he's going to do for the, with the EDIC.
Okay. And I am also pleased because I got to work with Andy on the town hall, the first town hall committee and found him a diligent and thorough person and I like his perspective and he's well-spoken and seems to be even-tempered. So, and I very much liked Ginny's letter of interest. You look like an excellent candidate as well and I look forward to getting to know you better.
Thank you. Any other comments? I will entertain two separate motions for these appointments, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Andrew Crosby to the Economic Development and Industrial Commission for the remainder of a five-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And?
I move to appoint Ginny Powell to the Economic Development and Industrial Commission for the remainder of a five-year term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you both.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, you both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you through the EDIC.
May I add a comment?
Thank you.
Yes.
So we do still need members. We have one other candidate that was not able to, I was not able to connect with them last week. But we do still need members. We need a fourth at least to have a quorum. So for anyone that's interested, please send your letter of interest through the resume, through our website. We have an application. And I know Kelly Lawler's been out there really advocating for the EDIC, so between her and word of mouth, love some more people to get involved. Both Andy and Ginny had really great ideas when I talked to them. I actually talked to both of them for quite some time. Really excited to get them going on this committee.
That's great.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
So our next order of business is the annual appointment of our building commissioner, Francis Ramsbottom. Any comments or anything?
Nope, so these are annual. It's actually all the inspectors that fall under the inspectional services. For whatever reason, their term is always through May. They're all doing a great job and I recommend they be reappointed for the next year.
I will entertain a motion for the building commissioner.
Mr. Chair, I move to reappoint Francis Ramsbottom to the position of building commissioner for a one-year term ending May 31st, 2025.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And for the next appointments, I think we can lump them all into one.
Mr. Chair, I move to reappoint the following inspectors for one-year terms ending May 31st, 2025. Local inspector Douglas Hyde, inspector of wires Robert W. Norton, deputy inspector of wires Dennis Montero, deputy inspector of wires Michael A. Norton, plumbing and gas inspector Adam Saulberg, deputy plumbing and gas inspector Robert Smith.
Second?
Just a quick comment. I've worked pretty much with all these folks and I know to be very forthright in performing their duties.
Great.
That's excellent.
Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. And the annual appointment of forest warden.
Mr. Chair, I move to reappoint fire chief John Paul Benoit to the position of forest warden through July 31st, 2024. Should I read the brackets?
It's up to you.
Due to the chief's upcoming retirement determined... Due to the chief's upcoming retirement, determined shorter than the usual June first through May thirty first annual term.
Second.
Uh, any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved. Uh, next on our agenda is the body worn camera policy. Chief?
So this is a new policy that we've uh that I'm bringing forward to the board. Um, we started working on this policy, I would say, uh about nine months ago. Uh, this this came forth because of a lot of police reform, and um we've, I felt that there was a lot of value to having uh to having these body worn cameras. So myself and the lieutenant approached uh the union to uh engage in some active negotiations or bargaining between us just about regarding the policy, that was our role, about what the officers felt that they um could could live with and what we felt we could live without too. So, yeah, we went back and forth for many, for many, many months, and the final product is what we, what I presented to you. Um, there, I would say, they did say that they are in agreement with everything, so the result is here that they are in agreement. Um, and as you know, we're, not everybody will have them, but we will, uh we're slowly, tho- those of us that are wearing them will adhere to this policy that we have in place, and that'll be like the lieutenant, myself, and some other um non-union employees at this time. But we'll see what happens, if it becomes law, or if the state regulations change, we'll already be ahead of it because this policy, this policy will be in place. Um, and it goes over everything from when to turn it on, when to turn it off, when it's supposed to be used, when it's not supposed to be used, and how the information, um how the officers are able to to review that their own uh camera footage, so. And how we are able to review it too, if we need to, from an administrative point of view as well. Uh, like I said, it did took us a very long time to get to this point, I'm really glad that we are at this point, and we can get these, this this part of it done and over with.
You certainly captured a lot of detail.
Yes, certainly did.
It was definitely educational.
Have you already started working on your EDIC manager?
The one.
That's the lieutenant. So she will be in charge of uh, a lot of the work is gonna be coming from public records requests, that's what we're finding talking to the police departments. Um, and so she'll be, the software that we're getting, hopefully will make it easier um to handle those because just because we have it doesn't mean that people get everything that we have, there are certain requirements that we have to react. And so the reaction software that hopefully that uh is coming along with it will help her do her job as well too.
How big are, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
How big are the cameras? I'm sorry, I should speak through the chair.
It's a square.
Sorry, it's my.
So the cameras are approximately, I don't know, size of a potato.
Like a cell.
It's like a small cellphone, you'll definitely see them on on the uniforms, once we start wearing them. And there's still a, it uh it depends on which vendor we found it up with, but you won't see them on us for a couple of months. This is back order, every department's getting them, so.
I had a quick question. Um, so I know you have, now you're all in agreement, everyone's in agreement, um. Is it in line with like with Post? Okay, that was my biggest question, I just wanted to make sure that like you weren't gonna have to come back to us again because then Post happens and and there's some part of it that has diverged enough that it would warrant that.
I can't say for certain, hey, we're good, we're concrete, that's the end of it.
Okay.
Um, as of right now, we're adhering to what the the, so the state put together a commission on body worn cameras. We incorporated their recommendations, and then on top of that, we are trying, and the lieutenant is working hard at trying to get us accredited. So we are taking those uh policies and standards as well in into this policy as well too. So some of the standards that are required from us are put into this policy, so we don't have to come back.
Okay, perfect.
But if 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 something goes, something to change.
Right.
Um, you know, and I try to make the minimal changes through general orders, but sometimes I have to come back in front of this board and say, hey, listen, this is a major thing that we need, we need approval for, and if that's the case, then I can do it. And I I'm gonna tell you, like, continuing on with that conversation about accreditation real quick, we're gonna be bringing some some policies to you guys, a lot, like, and it's gonna be chapters at a time. We won't try, we won't throw you, we won't throw you the whole eight hundred pages or twenty-four hundred standards, but it's gonna be a lot of them.
Great.
Great.
Well, yeah, I mean, the lieutenant and and is working really hard at it, so.
Thanks. And um, if I might, um is there, is there a thought that the state may require these cameras at some time soon, or?
So it all depends on who you talk to.
Yes, okay.
I I really, like, it it, I I've heard both ways, I've heard, yes, it's gonna come down, that it's gonna be a mandatory requirement, and I've heard that it's not gonna be that at all. Um, so I couldn't even, I could just give you a guess, and I could be wrong, so, I just heard both ways though.
Great. We'll just go through our own process then.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing as hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the body worn camera policy for the Stowe Police Department as presented by Police Chief Michael Solis.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Next on our agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Enjoy them.
Last man standing.
The fire suppression cistern.
So I um, we've been utilizing the ARPA funds to install fire suppression cisterns. Um, and we've got some different places mapped out all over town. Um, the last one that we put in was up on Conant Drive, and it's across from thirty-five Conant Drive. It turned out spectacular, it's it's really great, it's it's really worked out really well for us. Fortunately, we haven't had to use it yet, but um uh installing it has just made the whole neighborhood safer. We're allowed to protect two hundred and ten, you know, million dollars worth of property that's up there, and all the people that live up there too, of course, more important. But um, so I'd like to be able to do the same thing here at the Town Center Park. Um, now, this is a great location for us because this is centrally located in town. It can help us safeguard all the important buildings that we have in town here, all the central population of people that work, um live and work here. And just speaking from a tactic standpoint, which I love talking about in my job, I'm gonna be bored with it all night, is uh this parking lot here is really great for us. We can turn all of our fire apparatus around in there, and we have multiple tanker trucks in town fighting a fire. Um, that's a perfect spot for us to drive around in there, we don't have to worry about too much, I mean that. Now, I have two priorities with this project, the one of them would be, obviously, I need the cistern to work as it should. Um, but then the other one is, is I recognize that's a place of beauty, so my other priority would be making sure that this fits in with the landscape, everything gets put back exactly how it was, um because I want it to be an inviting place where people come there. I take my kids there too, we go fishing in the pond and stuff, and I want, uh, I want people to be, know that it's there, but I don't need it to stand out in the landscape either. So.
Thank you. Any questions? Hector.
I'm totally ignorant when it comes to cisterns, what's involved, are you digging a big hole and sticking a cement basin in there or something? Or cheating off of the minister's pond?
So it's it's a big, it's a big uh cement tank, that is what it is, and it's a, and the tank's quite large, actually, it's almost sixty by uh ten feet. It's, yeah, it's a pretty big tank, it is, holds thirty thousand gallons of water, and um it just sits in the ground, it has nothing to do, it's not hooked up to any of the lakes or the streams or anything like that, it's nothing to do to do with the groundwater. Once they install the tank, cause it comes in pieces, and the company comes, the manufacturer comes to the scene, puts it together, and then um the contractor fills it with pool water, and just sits there until we need it to fight a fire.
So every time it's used, you just?
Yeah, we have, every time it's used, we have to fill it back up again, so.
So?
Yep. And it's protected from freezing, it's protected from aquatic vegetation, which is some of the other problems that we have with uh quite a few of the other water sources we have in town. Um, this is just dedicated to fighting fires, and it's just, it's, it works out really well for us.
In the board actually had our hand up.
So. This property was purchased with, was this property purchased with chapter sixty-one?
It's in the CR to allow for water supplies.
Thank you, that was all my, oh, the only thing I asked, because there's so many restrictions on property.
I understand, yep.
Yes, so the captain met with Kathy um and Laura, cause the park is under recreation conservation, so they all met out there and identified, this is just a close-up of it, um that this is the ideal spot um for the cistern and for access, and it meets the requirements of the CR.
Thank you.
So will there just be a, is there just a hydrant kind of a thing, or some?
It's just, it would be a piece of just PVC pipe, there's, there'll be, there's actually um two of them, and those are the only things that are sticking up out of the ground, and it's the only thing that that you would see. And we would have signage there, it would affect the parking uh very minimally there. Um, you know, maybe one or two spots, but but that's really about it, that's really all you see at the end of it. And if you'd really like to see, I invite you to drive just past the Conant Drive one, that's the most recently installed one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and you can see exactly, exactly what you could expect there.
And the, oh, sorry.
No, I said great.
The church has is all aware of how it might affect them, and?
I actually have made several attempts to reach out to them, and I did finally get in contact with somebody that said, yeah, they're pretty much just all for it.
Okay.
Um, but I am working really hard to get something in writing there, so that's kind of what it's a little bit of a hurdle I'm dealing with there.
Okay.
They were very supportive of it.
Good, great.
And if I may just um acknowledge um Representative Hogan, um so when the captain mentioned the ARPA funds, they're actually the state ARPA funds that Kate has um earmarked for us, so she was able to purchase, procure the one from Conant and this one, and then she has additional funds for us, um as she is fully invested in this process, in this project.
Yeah, we received a lot of support from her, it's been very, it's been fantastic.
Yeah. It was, been needed in town for quite a while.
Yes, it has, yep, it has, um it's it's quite difficult without uh fire hydrants, like it, you know, typically are. Um, so us having to uh get water from just any cesspool we can find on the side of the road, or a lake, or a river, wherever like this, these, the cisterns that we have, it really, it really helps us out, it's tremendous, it really is.
Well, we have that land because there was no cistern, and because it was freezing cold, and they couldn't get anything out of the pond, and the house burnt down, and that's the story, so.
I didn't wanna mention that, but that's exactly what happened.
That land is there now, very unfortunate.
And we were um during, for that fire, we were able to um take water out of the um, um, the minister's pond right there on Great Road, just past the police station, but as you pointed out, it was.
Winter.
It was very cold that night, so they, every time they'd hack through the ice together, it would freeze back up again, we were dealing with a lot of, um, a lot of those problems. The the cisterns helped really eliminate a lot of that, so we're really excited about it.
Thank you.
A very sweet story, I guess.
Any uh further comments or questions? Seeing as hearing none, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the installation of a fire suppression cistern at Town Center Park per the plan presented by Fire Captain Barry Evers at this meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
May I just ask, um, would you like to just talk about the next location, even though it doesn't fall into the board, the board's purview, just to give them a highlight?
I'd be very happy to. Um, so this product's going out to bid very shortly, now with your permission with that, thank you very much for that, by the way. Um, so now I can start moving forward with the bidding process for this with the procurement officer. At the same time, I am also gonna be installing one of these at, I'd like to install one at the um, the parking lot in Bradley Lane at the entrance to the town forest. So it will be the same, it will be the same exact situation. Um, um, excuse me, uh the the town forest is four hundred acres of land, that's a substantial amount of land that we have to protect as well. So having in that parking lot right there is great for the, it's great for the protection of the conservation land there. Not only that, it's great for Bradley Lane and Great Road use as well. Um, once again, affecting parking very minimally there, the tanks are designed to have vehicles to drive on it and things like this. There's a few of them that are in town that are underneath the roads anyways. Um, so that, it's just a great place for it, so I'll be doing that, my plan is to be doing that at the same time, so it'll just be kind of getting it.
Oh, nice.
Nice.
Better to be proactive.
Yep, hundred percent, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for carrying the uh axe on.
What's that?
You carried the axe.
You're gonna tell her?
What?
The axe isn't that heavy.
Oh, I was, I was so impressed.
It's really shiny.
The other, the other guys over there, they do, they do a great job, and I have them carry the heavy flags, and they can do all that. And they do, and they do great with it, so.
You're so nice and attractive.
Oh, I, yeah, the least I could do was polish them.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night now. All right, next on our street, uh, agenda is the cross-street memo from the ZBA, review and author a submission to the TSAC for review. Madam Administrator.
Um, so yeah, so as you can see, the ZBA submitted a letter, um, it does not fall into their purview, obviously, to change the roads. Um, my recommendation is that you recommend it uh to the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee for their review, obviously, that's what we created that committee for. Um, we do have the full traffic study that was done by Mark O'Hagan for the development, um that they can take that into consideration along with any public safety concerns, and then report back to this board, um as you would be the decision maker, so. Um, I think as long as you're all in agreement, it should be fairly simple to just hand it off to them, unless you wanna discuss anything specific that you'd like uh the Traffic Safety Committee to review as part of this process.
I know there's been a lot of concerns from the area residents about what's going on with that intersection. Assuming they'll have an opportunity to speak up at these various presentations and discussions.
Yep.
Good.
Um, with that, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to submit the cross-street memo from the Zoning Board of Appeals to the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee so that the TSAC can review it and report back to the Select Board.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Uh, next on our agenda is the official bulletin board employment vacancy. Um. I believe, uh, Madam Administrator, you may have a comment concerning this.
Yep, um, so I submitted a memo in your packet, um, as you know, our town charter designated, uh previously, the town clerk was the one who authorized the official bulletin boards. Um, in the past, everything has been on paper, hung up outside the buildings, uh since my arrival, I have not hung employment vacancies there, no one's standing at the building looking for a job. Um, the charter changed pass at town, at the election, it is officially in place now, our new charter, it gives the Select Board the authority to designate the official bulletin board. Uh, at this point, though, I'm just asking you to designate the official bulletin board for employment vacancies. I do think we should have a larger conversation about meeting notices as well, um but for tonight, I'm just asking for the employment vacancies. We put them up on our website, we put them in a number of different locations, but again, no one's standing outside in the dark and in the rain to see what job opportunities we have available, so it's just to formally designate the website as our bulletin board for jobs.
And why are we doing it as two separate things, rather than having that larger conversation?
Well, I I think, cause I think it's a larger conversation for the meeting notices.
Do you need this one ASAP?
No, it's not that we need it, I just, it's to make it official as to what we do. Um, you know, I can certainly add to the, an upcoming agenda, the meeting notices, um again, I personally think it should be the website. Um, you know, the argument will always be, well, if the website goes down within forty-eight hours of someone posting it, they can't hold a meeting. In all my years of doing this, it's been one meeting that's ever been missed in all of my towns because of a website being down for a prolonged period of time. Um, and again, we've had boards come and just post something outside and not put it on the website to try and sneak under the radar. Joyce now goes down every single morning and makes note of every single meeting, and updates our website accordingly. Um, but I think, again, people shouldn't have to come here, I mean, I think I told you one night, I I went outside, it was pouring rain, and there's this man who, we happen to have a milk crate next to the front door, standing on it, trying to write down what meetings were on our board because he didn't have, um, he couldn't find a Zoom address, and he was trying to write down the Zoom address. I said, I will send it to you, like, brought him in, it's just, when people are only posting outside. So, yes, I think we should do it officially for everything at some point, or at least have that conversation. I think this one's a little less controversial.
Okay.
I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to designate the town. Mr. Chair, I move to designate the town's website as the official bulletin board for employment vacancies.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Meeting minutes? Any comments?
I have one. On the disposition of the woodhead land or the acceptance of their gift, I would particularly like Joyce to change blueberry habitat to bluebird habitat.
Oh, I didn't pick that off.
I would have never seen that.
Thanks for the sharp eyes.
Blueberries don't live there.
I'm a blueberry girl.
Any other?
I thought the minutes were their usual awesome selves. Thanks to Joyce.
I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the meeting minutes of the May 14th, 2024 meeting with the amendment.
I'll second that and the awesomeness of Joyce.
Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Okay, I'm gonna abstain, which is why I didn't vote.
Okay.
Okay.
That's right.
So it's just, it's not unanimous, I didn't vote.
Right.
Right. Okay, just wanna make sure.
Board correspondence and updates. Anybody have anything to mention of correspondence?
I feel neglected by Xfinity of Verizon.
Well, you did get that and you did you.
Yeah.
Should have satisfied your curiosity.
All right.
We're gonna have a presence at the groundbreaking ceremony?
Yep. I know Megan and I are going. I don't know if anyone else is RSVP, or if you need me to RSVP for anybody.
Unfortunately, I cannot.
I'm gonna be at a conference all day, so I can't see you 10:00 in the morning.
I'm gonna be at work all day, so.
That's fine, Megan and I will represent, it's fine.
I think that's just wonderful.
Fine job of it. I will accept one final motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
Second half.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Well, less than an hour.